If you're able or willing, would you be so kind to stand for an invocation and remain standing for the pledge to the flag?
Dear Lord, we meet to serve our community this evening. To use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good, we recognize our responsibilities to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and communities. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure at 6 o'clock will the Henry County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, two-state, December 17th come to order. If you got, some of the agendas I think got out a little early and had the wrong date on it, but it is December 17th, and it is 6:30. Before I ask for acceptance to the agenda, we've got an announcement, public hearing, Kathy Scheller, Stockbridge, Georgia requesting amendment to the comprehensive plan for a project located on the northwest corner of Highway 155 and Campground Road in the Land Lot 38 and District 7. The request is to amend the future land use plan designated from low density residential to commercial. The property is located within Commission District 3. That's Exhibit 4. The applicant has asked that that be withdrawn. Item B, public hearing, Chuck Adalaco of DeLuque, Georgia requests an amendment to the comprehensive plan for a property located on the southwest corner of Highway 155, Pinola Road, Land Lot 11, District 7. The request is to amend the future land use plan designated from low density residential to commercial. The property is located within Commission District 5. That also has been withdrawn by the applicant. For some, if you have the paper copy, if you move over to Item 13, where it says community development, electronically it's on there, but on the paper version it didn't come out, but you need to add, need to add the resolution to approve the project framework for the Jodico at Black Hall Road between Henry County Board of Commissioners and the Georgia Department of Transportation intersection. So if you'd be so kind as to add that if you're doing the paper, and other than that, everything seems to be in order.
So move.
Having a motion from District 3? Second from District 5. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Public safety resolution requesting acceptance of a grant from the United States Secret Service Financial Crime Task Force Commission. Major Goins, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This resolution is to request the acceptance of $1,750 from the United States Secret Service as part of our participation with the Financial Crimes Task Force. Henry County Police Department joined the United States Secret Service Financial Transaction Card and Financial Crime Task Force in 2013. The task force investigates white collar crimes, fraud, bribery, Ponzi schemes, insider trading, embezzlement, and cybercrime. As part of our participation in the task force, the department will be allocated $1,750. Sorry, $1,750. This grant is not a match grant. There are no funds required.
Do you have any comments or questions from the board? We have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to accept a $1,750 grant from the United States Secret Service Financial Crime Task Force. Somebody move in that direction.
Move to the floor.
We have a motion from District 3, second from District 1. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a resolution requesting approval of a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for SR 138 Medium Landscape Project, Rocky Romero.
Good morning, Chairman, members. SRT 138 Medium Landscaping is designated as SPOS 3 transportation project. Previous Resolution Number 13-247 was approved, awarding the medium landscaping on SRT 138. A right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation is needed. With this agreement, Henry County will be responsible for maintaining the median on SRT 138 from the county line to I-75. Staff recommends approval of this right-of-way mowing agreement between Henry County and GDOT. I will take any questions.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Has legal reviewed this contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It just said that the ongoing maintenance will not be a SPOS expenditure after completion of the installation. You mentioned that, right?
No, sir. The maintenance is going to be done by the county, not SPOS. Not, SPOS only paying for the landscaping, the plants and the malls.
Do you have any questions or comments anybody would like to make? If not, we have a resolution in the book, SPOS Resolution to approve a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation for the SR 138 Medium Landscape Project. Could somebody move in that direction?
So move.
We have a motion from District 5, have a second from District 4. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have the floor.
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Rocky, when we met the other day, we were looking at our SPOS 4, but Banks Road and Rock Quarry Road is in 3.
That's correct.
So, and we're moving forward with that, correct?
That's correct. We're moving with the design currently.
And we're going to go ahead and do the, we're going to go ahead and do the intersection improvement with the turn lanes and everything, right?
That's correct. Construction too, yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Community Development Discussion Regarding Building Department Overtime Inspection Program, Derek. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairman and Board. This discussion item is to establish a building department overtime inspections program. Before I begin, I have two revisions to the executive summary. On the background summary, Item Number 3, Line 2, replace premium service with additional service.
It's not premium.
And on Page 2 of the executive summary, for additional comments and recommendation, Item Number 2 changed the additional time to be $15 in lieu of $18 per quarter hour. And with that, the regularly scheduled inspections are conducted during normal business hours between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding holidays, and are performed within two business days in accordance with state law. Situations necessitate inspections outside of normal business hours include impending inclement weather, disruption of services or utilities, disruption to business operations and customers, unanticipated abrupt changes in construction schedules, closing appointments, no access during normal business hours, and same-day re-inspections. The building department desires to create an overtime inspections program as an additional service to conduct inspections, including business license inspections, which are outside of normal business hours, including holidays, weekends, and weekdays before 8:00 a.m. or after 5:00 p.m. for an additional fee using existing staffing on a volunteer basis. Inspector availability or inspection approval is not guaranteed. Overtime inspections for an additional fee will not occur during normal business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding holidays. Overtime inspections will be assessed as a one-hour minimum on weekdays and a three-hour minimum on weekends and holidays. Additional time will be assessed per quarter hour after the one-hour minimum on regular workdays and the three-hour minimum on weekends or holidays. This program will provide a competitive business advantage over surrounding jurisdictions. The building department director will create policies and procedures involved in carrying out the provisions of this program as it applies to residential and commercial construction. Staff recommends establishing a building department overtime inspections program. This program will be financially supported by additional fees assessed to the builder, developer, contractor, and/or private homeowner for this additional service as follows: $75 per hour for the first hour with a one-hour minimum on regular workdays, which are outside the normal business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding holidays, and a three-hour minimum on weekends and holidays. An additional time will be $15 per quarter hour with a, after the one-hour minimum on regular workdays, or three-hour minimum on weekends or holidays. I have spoken to representatives from the Council for Quality Growth, including Steve Cash on this program and with Bob White, and they do approve this program or in favor of the program.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What is the timeframe if a contractor calls for an inspection? What's the, how long do you have before you can do the inspection?
Regularly scheduled inspections through the normal process, when they request the inspection, we have two business days to perform that inspection. Most, the majority of inspections are conducted the next business day. We've had a high volume of inspections, and we have a vacancy on our staff, and it's put us into a rollover situation where some inspections are rolling over.
So when it's our fault, there won't be a charge?
That is correct.
The next thing, I noticed that you have a lot of areas, I mean, that have put this in place, but it's Arlington, Virginia, Aurora, California, Beaufort, South Carolina, Ada, Oklahoma, actually, they didn't, Las Vegas and that. I don't see anywhere around us like Spalding or Clayton or Rockdale or...
Yes, sir. That's correct. The reason that I did, I listed those departments because those are the accredited building departments in the United States. We don't have an accredited building department within the state of Georgia currently. At some point, if we were to move to attempt to achieve accreditation with our building department, I don't want a program in place that we would have to change. So I was demonstrating that this program is approved from accredited building departments. Their, Cherokee County did have an inspection, I can put this on the, on the board here. Cherokee County had this program for about 15 years, and this was, this is about a month old, this document, I called them about a month ago. So about seven months ago, they did discontinue this, but they were charging $65 per permit. So if you had a plumbing inspection and a building inspection, it would be two times the fee. They explained to me that about $5 was going to the general fund, $5 to another fund, and $55 were going to the building inspector performing the inspection. They discontinued this program due to questions about that, but they did successfully have this program for an extended period of time in Cherokee County.
The $55 that was going to the building inspector, was it going through the county?
I do not know.
Yeah. Well, I'd have a problem with that too, but I have a little bit of a problem in that having worked a fair amount in Henry County and understanding as much as I do about the commercial trade, I have issues with putting something like this in play at this time, especially when we're trying to do everything we can to promote more business to come to Henry County. That's all I have.
Anybody have any comments? Bishop?
Actually, Derek, I received some, an email from one of my citizens who had some concerns, and I want to go through some of these questions, and I think I understand why they were asking some of these questions. Because what, before I get to questions, what I'm concerned about is if we create a system to where there's an additional fee that you can do after-hours or expedited service, that who do we assign to go do that case? And is it get essentially a pay-for-play type situation where maybe if you want preferential treatment, the guy who's going to treat you easily because he's on, you're paying him an additional fee that he's getting paid because it's not costing the county anything, it's coming through this special program, I worry about, you know, our employees are great people, but it, but they're, I worry the, we cut into a system to where our daytime inspectors are running things really hard, and then the guys that are paying the $75 are getting paid a little bit extra, maybe because these guys are signing up to, you know, give them this extra overtime and paying a much higher rate, that there's an implied incentive for that. Just something to think about because it sounds like this is not being funded. The county would not pay anything for this. This would be paid by these additional fees that the private person would be paying, correct?
That's correct. The, that discussion did occur internally. On a department level, there are checks and balances within the procedure and a quality control check as well. The inspections could be assigned via random number generator that we could just randomly select. I could put in a program that the normal inspector for that job does not get that, so there isn't the appearance of impropriety. The inspector is not, they are only earning time and a half on, when they exceed the 40 hours a week, and double time on holidays. So that's, that's the fee that the, or the rate of pay that the inspectors would get.
I don't do tax preparation anymore, but I know when I was doing tax preparation, I gave my family and friends a rate that was discounted, and then I had my full four paying clients. It always seemed that my clients, my friends and family that I was paying discounted rates, there's always got put at the bottom of the pot because I knew I could go make a little bit extra off the clients paying full retail prices. Is there, is there any concern that this might cause our inspectors to feel like, hey, let's, during day hours, let's get caught up on all this paperwork, not do these inspections because we pushed this to after-hours? It's a win for everybody because we get kicked up a little bit, we get time and a half, and instead of increasing productivity like I think you're trying to do, we've actually created a system of incentivizing doing this after-hours so we could kick it up a notch.
And that's why the quality control is put in place and the oversight, and there's so many steps in the approval process, and then there's also a review after the inspections are performed. This wasn't, this program was first thought of when I was contacted by a contractor when we had bad weather coming in. They hadn't called in the inspection properly, and they've risked thousands of dollars of damage getting washed out. They wanted an inspector over the weekend, and I couldn't help them. It's just a mechanism that I'm requesting that, if that assistance is needed. Some jurisdictions request or require reasonable justification. I'm not a proponent of that because you may get people that just give us any reason to do that. I don't want to encourage people to lie or falsify information. Just tell them, you know, whatever reason we need to, to get the inspection, I just want to open it up freely to everybody.
Derek, is there a demand for after-hour inspections, or did you just have that one situation?
I've had a few requests since I've been with the department. I know in speaking with Steve Cash, he was enthusiastically supporting the program. He was very excited about it.
I have a few questions I have, because now that I interject all my thoughts, but I actually have these questions that the citizens go get mad at me if I don't ask these things. Real quick, if the county, what liability, additional liability will the county incur, you know, because this is after-hours? Any additional thing that y'all run by legal? Any concerns with that?
I think the key is going to be in the administration of it, and Derek has said he was going to implement some policies and procedures, so working with him, I think I will look at those in order to make sure we can mitigate those. But the thing that is, stands out foremost in my mind is ensuring that the money is provided before the actual sending out of an employee, because once the employee is sent out, the county is on the hook for that overtime. And if the check is in the mail and it never comes, then that's an expense the county will incur. So we need to make certain that the money somehow precedes the actual going out there when the, when the appointment is made for the after-hours. And I don't know how we can practically do that, but that'll be in your policy procedures.
The difficulties that I, that we would have in that is we, in some circumstances, we can predict how long an inspection would take. Certainly, if there was a re-inspection and there were just certain items that we needed to look at, it'd be very quick. If it's a first-time inspection on a complicated structure, multiple disciplines, it could go for a while, and it's an hourly rate. So in the policy that I have attached, we, we have the customer sign the agreement that it is compensation for the services performed, including time returned to the county and to do the administrative paperwork. In addition to that, they have to provide a check. There will be no cash accepted. It'll be, it will be a check, and they'll take custody of the check, and then at the end of the inspection, they'll return it back to the customer. They fill in the amount, sign it, and they have it. And that way, we know that they have the, the check is ready, made out to the county Board of Commissioners, and that's, that's the check and balance that we have for payment.
The other question I have is, county vehicles could be used even though this is after-hours?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they come back here, pick up the vehicle, and then drive to do the inspection?
Yes, sir. In most circumstances, that, that is the case. If they're at the end of their day and they know they've been assigned overtime inspections, they could go directly to that route, whatever is most efficient for use of county assets.
And then last two, comp time, no comp time's not tied into this whatsoever, I'm assuming? No comp time?
Not at this time. We certainly could explore that option.
And then volunteer means that this is free to the county, meaning that the fees, as you said, would cover all the costs of this project?
That is correct.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I only have one comment, and I might have misheard you, but I thought that when somebody asks, "Do we have a need for this?" and "Why would they do this?", I thought you indicated that a builder had got to a point where he needed an inspection. It might be the weekend or something, he knew a storm was coming, and he wanted to hurry up and get an inspection and get it done, and then because of storm would wipe it out. Did I hear that wrong?
That is correct.
Okay. My question is, so we got a builder out there that's got six or seven houses they're building. They got the footings all lined up and got everything compacted, and so they know the storm's coming, so they hurry and they get, they get the approval from our inspection department for five houses, and then the storm comes, and then we don't go back and re-inspect it, right?
If they had the approval, they, the particular circumstance that I was referring to, they had concrete scheduled for a Saturday pour, and I think the storm was coming, the weather was predicting Sunday.
Okay. So you, okay, I misunderstood. I thought maybe it was any event where they would have something that's ready for inspection, but a storm was coming, they knew it would terminate it, but you get the safe tower inspection and run out and get it accepted, and then an inspector wouldn't come back out till later. But I just threw that out. That was, I probably misunderstood everything you were talking about when you said why they would do that. Does anybody else have any questions? If not, thank you so much. This is for discussion only, and I'm sure the board will...
That's okay. For discussion only, that's good, because I'll have an opportunity to call and talk to them.
Okay. Yes. Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Because we'll have a conversation.
We'll be available to do a three-on-three if you'd like to as well.
That'd be good, because I just want to know, obviously, the Sea of Atlanta and other places have the same issues. What are they doing? That's what I want to know. What are they doing around us? And I'm not trying to be adversarial, but I don't care what Aurora or Las Vegas or Colorado or Virginia or no other place does. I'm really interested in what happens around here.
Understood.
If we can get that, that'd be good.
So he's going to have to do some research to get to it, because obviously he doesn't have that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's move right along. Next, we'll have a public hearing. Paris Integrated Health of McDonald, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA, residential infrastructure to C1, neighborhood commercial, for a property located on the south side of East Lake Parkway, east of Highway 42, Land Lot 2 of 11th District. The property consists of 4.1 acres plus or minus acres. The request is for a commercial development. The property is located within Commission 4 District. I present it, Jeremy.
Mr. Gilbert, good evening. Good evening, Chairman and Board members. The request that is before you is a rezoning request for a property that is currently zoned RA. It's 4.11 plus or minus acres. They would like to rezone it to C1, neighborhood commercial for the purpose of an office, for a medical office. According to the conceptual site plan, the applicant's semitic, they're currently proposing one, one new structure at this time to be located on the property. There is room for additional structures to be constructed at a later date, but right now, they're proposing one structure with 25 parking spaces. The proposed building is a medical office. The subject property is located in the U4 Eagles Landing Parkway Extension Corridor Specialty Use Activity Center. The aforementioned activity center should have 65% of its total acreage designated for non-residential, 15% designated for residential, 15% for open space, and 5% for civic. According to the topology mix, it's in the Henry County Cities, County and City Joint Community Agenda, the applicant would not be required at this time to master plan the activity center as this, this site is less than five acres, so it did not trigger the master planning requirement. At this current time, this activity center has no non-residential properties designated or zoned at this time. This was heard by the zoning advisory board, and they did recommend approval of this request. The request is supported by the comprehensive land use plan as far as the activity center goes, bringing in the commercial that's currently not there to get to that 65% that the topology requirement shows. Staff recommended approval of C1 with seven conditions, and the zoning advisory board again also recommended approval. I'll answer any questions that the board has on this one.
Anybody have any questions at this time? If not, with applicant, please appear, give your name and address and who you're representing, if you're not representing yourself, please. You've got 15 minutes.
Good evening. I'm Greg Nobles. I'm here on behalf of Paris Integrated Health to present the property, and also on behalf of the property owners. We appreciate your consideration of this application. We've worked closely with staff to go through the different issues with the, with the property and with the activity center. The purpose of the business operation is a local physician in the Eagles Landing area that wants to build and own their own office. They're currently leasing in that area now, and you have a couple of offices in that area. So they're looking to build, the first phase of this would be a 5,000-square-foot office building for their use, as shown on the, the plan here. We've looked at future phases, but because of the economy and uncertainties of that, we don't have an overall plan for building the next office building there in the area until we have a use for it or tenant occupants. So we felt like it, it may be five years, six years before there's need for an additional building on the site. The location there, we've looked at the location, there's some, was some questions brought up by local residents about stormwater drainage and the couple of ponds that are adjacent to the property. We've looked at that, met with the engineer on the project, went through some suggestions and things, and, and he's assured us that the site plans will meet all of the applicable stormwater provisions for the area to keep the mud and runoff out of the neighboring ponds. One of the neighboring ponds is involving the relative of the, of the seller of the property. So we definitely want to make sure that all of those things are addressed for the neighbor and for the, and for the owner's mother. The primary practice of this office building is general, general practice with a focus on senior medication and wellness education is the type of business that'll be going in there. I know that question's come up in the past.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
The owner and applicant understand the seven conditions imposed by the zoning advisory board?
Yes, sir. We reviewed those at the last meeting.
You agree to those without any issues?
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Anybody else have any questions? I want to say you've got three minutes left, so I'll reserve it time. You've got 12, 12, 12 minutes. Now I'd like to open the floor up. Anybody in opposition like to be heard at this time? You'd have 15 minutes for the total. Anybody like to hear in opposition of this? Yes, sir.
I'm not in opposite, my name's Al Storey. I live, I got 51 acres that joins the property, and I'm not in opposition to it, but I'd like to know what the seven conditions are.
Could you post the seven conditions right there, please?
Could you post the seven conditions right there, please? Can you read that?
No, sir.
Huh? Come put these up.
Mr. Chair, I'm being informed.
Thank you, sir.
All building exterior shall be constructed of brick, stone, stucco, glass, or any combination thereof. Dumpster shall be placed on concrete pad and closed on three sides. The enclosure shall be constructed of brick, stone, stucco, or any combination thereof, provided it is consistent with the primary structure, and shall not exceed eight feet in height. A detailed landscaping plan shall be submitted. The Department of Environmental Compliance and Plan Review shall have final approval, approval of the plan prior to issuance of any permits. Sidewalks five feet in width shall be constructed along the entire frontage of the property on East Lake Parkway. The site shall access will be located in such that the minimum intersection site distance is met per the road's posted speed limit. The site access shall be required to design and construct a deceleration lane, acceleration lane taper to H, Henry County DOT standards. Prior to issuance of development permit, the applicant shall coordinate with Henry County DOT regarding the paved shoulder section. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary herein, no zoning conditions imposed herein shall be interpreted or applied in any such manner so as to require any violation of any existing building, development, stormwater, and/or any applicable codes.
Very good. Could I have a copy of that, Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we keep this copy, and if, that's the resolution you have, right, posted? If you'll scroll it down where I can read it. And, no, you, you keep that.
And Mr. Storey, you can also pull it up on the Internet and go to our archives after this meeting, and you'll be able to put everything up that we've got on here.
All right. Do they have to come back before y'all, before they can build another building on that property?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Does anybody else like to be heard in opposition? Anybody like to be heard in favor of this? If not, I'm sure in the public hearing concluded. The board has a resolution in the book that you can approve it with seven conditions, or you can deny it.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to approve a rezoning request for Pergas Integrated Health from RA to C1 for property located on the south side, East Lake Road Parkway, east of Highway 42, 1634 Brandon Road, and Land Lot 16, correction, Land Lot 2 of 11th District, consisting of 4.1 acres plus or minus. Any further discussion? Only in favor, if you're at hand.
Second.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Both second.
Have a motion to District 4. Have a second from District 2. Any further discussion? Only in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. This is why we have help up here. I didn't do that just to see if it was paying attention either, guys. Next, we have a resolution approving the project framework for Jodico and Black Hall Road between the Henry County Board of Commissioners and the Georgia Department of Transportation. Ms. Sherry, thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. As Chairman Smith has indicated, the request before you this evening is a project framework agreement for the Jodico at Black Hall Road intersection. The Georgia Department of Transportation notified county staff that they were ready to proceed with the project framework agreement, which is a project phase participation commitment. The project framework agreement before you tonight is just for the preliminary engineering at this time, and then some additional agreements will come back at a later date for right-of-way indoor construction. Again, this project is a SPOS four designated project, and our SPOS department will administer the project. I've included in your package a copy of the agreement, and it also outlines the figures that we will be required to pay in conjunction with the project. Because there are federal dollars attached to this project, the county will be required to match it at 20%. For the preliminary engineering, the federal allocation will be $114,000, and the local allocation will be $28,600. If you should have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. And if you have any specific project questions, Rocky Romero is here to answer those.
We have any questions coming in from the board? If not, we have a resolution approving the project framework agreement, PFA, for Jodico at Black Hall Road between Henry County Board of Commissioners and the Georgia Department of Transportation for intersection improvement. Somebody moving that direction?
Oh, no.
We have, we have a motion from District 5, a second from District 2. Any further discussion? Only in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Request for a four-way stop at the intersection Heathmore Drive and Ashley in the Emerald Plantations subdivision, Mr. McNichols.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. We, we did have a request for a multiway stop at the intersection of Ashley Drive and Heathmore Drive. Our staff did an engineering study, see if any of the warrants were met according to MUTCD. None of the warrants were met. Now, the homeowners association did circulate a petition requesting the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorize the installation of two additional stop signs at the intersection of Ashley Drive and Heathmore Drive, making the intersection a four-way stop. The homeowners association supplied a petition with 84 out of 110 lots in favor, which equates to 76.4%. In agreement with this, so we are bringing this forward to the board for your decision.
Anybody have any questions for Terry? If not, we have two resolutions in the book. One calls for the installation of two additional stop signs at the intersection of Ashley Drive and Heathmore Drive to create a four-way stop. We have one in here that says, "Deny installation." So, at the pleasure of the board, if somebody would move in one of those directions?
I'll move to approve the...
We have a motion to District 2 to approve a resolution of the installation of two additional stop signs at the intersection of Ashley Drive and Heathmore Drive to create a four-way stop. I have a second. I have a second from District 5. Gary, you need to get quicker. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Only in favor, raise your right hand. So, move. Thank you. My peripheral hearing is better than my peripheral vision. Okay. Next, presidential question award of a bid for guardrail repairs. Terry?
Yes, sir. From time to time, it's necessary for us to repair damaged guardrail throughout the county. We have assessed several sites and determined that they need repair. Those are listed as Turner Church Road, Daily Mill Road, Oak Grove Road, East Lake Parkway and Price Quarters, 54 East Lake Parkway, and another section on East Lake Parkway approximately 850 feet east of English Road. We have put those out for bid, and we recommend award to lowest bidder of Martin Robbins Fence Company in the amount of $16,099.
Anybody have any questions for Terry? I have one question here from District 4.
Terry, do we recoup any of these costs via the insurance companies where these, where they get ran into, or do we just, do we not catch them once?
We, when Jim Wellman's here, I think we have attempted to do that. If we know there's a police report, an accident, I can go back and look and see, or get Kenny to see if there was accidents here, and try to look at that and see if we can recoup those. It's a good idea.
Because that's a lot of them.
Are you going to follow up with that, right?
Yes, sir. I'll try to follow up with that.
Satisfactory. This follows up. Any other questions? If not, we have a resolution to board approving the award to a bid of guardrail repairs to Martin Robbins Fence Company in the amount of $16,099.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion from District 4. I have a second from District 3. Any further discussion? Only in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have award bid for road signs and signage material.
Yes, sir. Our DOT, our sign shop requires these road sign materials to build our signs so we can maintain our county roadway signing and system. We ask for this to be like a unit contract bid, so we can have these, a quick access to these products without having to bid them out every time. So, CL bids were requested and sent out through the purchasing department. We had five vendors respond. We recommend award to the low bidder. This contract is one that replaces the previous contract that is expired, and we do have funds in our budget. Recommend award to Vulcan Aluminum for the purchase of road signs and signage materials as a unit price bid agreement with no fixed quantities for one year, with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions.
Could you, could you put a copy of this up just for record of the, the bid tabulation?
It's pretty small print, but I'll see if we can...
Shake and make it look like an elephant. Somebody can't over there. Who is it?
You better.
Oh. Just bring down the bottom line. I, I thought this was significant. That, that the difference in this is you got one company went 207,000, and then you got the Universal is 83, and then we got Vulcan Aluminum, it's 80,000, for you, Alabama. And then, we had one that bid, and then I'm surprised that the Georgia Correctment Institute, Correctment Institute didn't bid on that. But I guess it is.
A lot of these are blank materials. I think they bid more signs that are completely made.
Okay. Any Board members have any question at this time? If not, we have a resolution to the board to award a bid for road signs and signage material to Vulcan Aluminum for Alabama and $80,551.80. Somebody move in that direction. We have a motion to District 3.
Second.
I have a second for District 1. Any further discussion? Only in favor, raise your right hand. So, move. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Next, we have County Manager. We have a resolution requesting approval of the Capital Improvement Program, CAP, for the airport, Michael Harris.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board members. The Georgia Department of Transportation requires on an annual basis that jurisdictions with a local airport, that they submit a five-year capital improvement program. It's, it's required to be submitted annually by December 31st. And the purpose of the plan is to identify both proposed and speculative projects which may be undertaken within the next, that subsequent five-year period. In this case, it'd be our, our five-year plan would cover the years from 2005 to 2019. In order to seek state or federal funding for any prospective project, the proposed project must be shown on the CIP, on the Capital Improvement Program. The county is not obligated to fund any project listed in the CIP which does not already have an executed agreement in place. And it may decline any state or federal funds that may be awarded if the county deems that is no longer in the best interest of the county to do that project at that time. The items listed in years 2015 and 2016 include those projects which are required in order to meet the Phase 2 obligations of our current grant, which is acquiring land for the RPZ and relocating Mount Pleasant Road, as well as work approved in the upcoming SPOS, sanitary sewer, and FBO requirements. So, again, the board, we do, we are obligated to do certain portions of the work out there right now, and I'll show those on a, on a, on a map in just a moment. But prior to that obligation being met, the board had to first, we had to first bring an agreement to the board, and the board is, signed an agreement with Muji Dot to do that work. Any subsequent projects that would be proposed for the airport would have to go through the exact same process in which we'd have to go back and bring that, that project before the board and then enter into an agreement. It should be noted that, as you can see, looking at the numbers on the CIP for those listed in the year 2015, the county portion, the local portion represents 5%, where the state is picking up the, or the feds picking up the 90, and the state's picking up the additional 5. And the local obligation, in our case, county obligation, is 5% in those cases. I did want to briefly go through and just kind of show you what the year 2015, and we have the map for the other ones as well. And also, I want to note that Mr. Jim Crow and Ms. Rebecca Collins from Crowe, they're here to address any specific questions that the board may have in regards to what's shown in the plan. And again, this shows the 2015 items as noted. Your land acquisition for the runway protection zone of the RPZ and the roadway relocation of Mount Pleasant Road. Those are the principal items listed.
Mr. Michael, do you have a copy of Phase 2?
Yes. What's shown right there, that is Phase 2 work, project.
Can you walk us through Phase 2 and give us a timeline on when Phase 2 should be completed?
We certainly can. And I'm going to ask Rebecca to come up and give me a little bit of assistance with this as well. Yeah. Phase 2 includes the land acquisition for the road relocation and the runway protection zone, as noted. Land acquisition here, runway protection, you want to speak on some of the scheduling, timeframes?
As we have it shown, what we're showing for 2015 would be the actual acquisition of the land, and then the construction of Mount Pleasant Road. 2015's also showing the design for the removal of the displaced threshold, which is the final step of that phase. We would design it that year, including an ALP update, which would be required due to changing the threshold location. And in 2016, that would allow us to construct the removal of the displaced threshold, and that would complete your contractual agreements. And you had five years to initiate that as well. So, if, you know, it may not be the state can fund all of those projects as we have shown, but that is what we're requesting.
How many acres are we obligated to purchase?
Right now, it's 26 for the RPZ and seven for the road relocation, for a total of 33. Is that correct? 33?
Yes, 33.
And 90 to 95% of that will be covered by FAA?
FAA would cover 90%. The state would cover 5%, and you would cover 5%.
5%.
I think it's important, you, you went over it a little bit quick, but for those that are watching, the total of it is $4,671,000, with the county's portion being $233,550. So, I mean, it's, it's a good, it's a good thing for the county, and plus, we need it to get that added length on the airport. So, and it's a five-year plan. I just wanted to be sure the numbers registered out, you know, out in the public, that it's 400, 4, 671,000, of which the county's portion, 233,550.
That's correct. The purpose of this threshold would be...
Approve what?
Make it possible for it to...
Have an ILS system now?
The purpose of this would be to get full use of all of the pavement that the state paid to be constructed during the last extension. We were only able to use about half of that space because of the location of Mount Pleasant Road, but it would allow longer runway and larger planes to come in.
We need that threshold for an ILS, correct?
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions? I, I'm going to ask one question.
Yes, sir.
And then it will lead up to other things.
Yes.
And I'm going to tell you how I got there. The first thing, this might be a play on timing, because I do know that this board officially changed the name of it from Atlanta South Regional to Henry County Airport.
Yes.
Okay. And I don't, I know the FAA has a lag in time where they change over from one to the other, but this application here says Atlanta South Regional Airport. So, I'm saying the name change hadn't officially taken place, which I accept that.
That's correct. It has been submitted in, and you're right, it has been submitted in formally. We're just waiting for them to catch up with our...
On about December 13th, and this is, I, I think I can, I think I can speak of this, and I'm going to ask legal counsel if I go too far, and, and if it's pending, proposes pending litigation, then you have to tell me. But it, this is how I got in the loop. But it appears that when I got in the loop, I was told that LPA, it says, "Per discussion, please attach the ATAPI master agreement." And then it says, "In their opinion, based on the above resolution, the master agreement with the county was understanding that FAA circular related to the procurement." So, basically, what LPA is saying, I didn't even know LPA from whomever. I didn't know LPA because I wasn't here. Okay. Anyway, it says, it says, "Understanding that the next contract opportunity will be related to assistance of county with the land acquisition process." So, now, having said that, I, I got with Shay, the clerk, and I want to know when this took place. So, I went to the minutes and found out that December 5, 2011, if you look at the minutes, it said, "An agreement for professional services pertaining to the airport consulting service." Okay. And then, then I read this, and basically, what it says, it was four vendors involved in it. Staff recommended, based on the review of the above airport... Staff recommended, based on the review of the above airport vendors have worked diligently, project list, okay, they awarded two firms. The primary firm, engineering contractor, which would be LPA Group, and the secondary, which would be Crowe Engineering. Okay, and then they approved a resolution after lengthy discussion about what all this was, and it said Chairman Mathis asked if there was a hop out provision agreement, and Mr. Wiley responded, yes, Mr. Sanders stated the 60 years, so it went four and zero. Now, I read this, and I, I know Crowe did the expansion. And I'm sure there's some FAA rules, G, GDOT rules, I'm not familiar with, I was on the other side of the spectrum, but reading this, I, I couldn't, I looked back and I couldn't figure out how LPA got, got out of the picture, and this is no disrespect, Crowe become the primary, but they always the secondary. Now, the, the questions I got to ask, and, and I've, I've been in concert with legal counsel because it's, I sent her an email and I said, help me, how did, she would know, how did this happen? Well, she's not familiar with FAA rules, and, and, but anyway, I, I, I got a copy of all the minutes and I looked at the, trying to sort this out, and then what I need to do is who prepared the CIP that's being presented tonight?
Crowe, our consultant, Crowe, prepared in conjunction and collaboration with GDOT. GDOT was involved in the process as well.
Correct.
Okay, well let me ask you this, how, is, is an LPA the county's primary consultant based on the BOC award at 12, 5, and then I, I just, I, Crowe is second.
Right.
So could you, are you prepared, or can you, are you able to explain to me in detail how, how, how it shifted, how, how did the primary get out?
Right.
And secondary took it, and now we, we're opening it up evidently, and Crowe stays the secondary even though we're going to bid this out again, is that correct?
Well, and I can't speak on the specifics of everything that, that, that took place, but what I can say is, I know in a case with the preparation of the CIP, there was no contractual agreement, they volunteered and offered to provide, to prepare the CIP, and they did so in conjunction with, with GDOT. Since that time, I wasn't made aware that there were questions obviously on primary position, secondary position as related to the consultants, and in fact, I met, spoke earlier today with, with representatives from LPA, and he had communication with representatives from GDOT, and my understanding that GDOT has indicated there'll be, they're looking at it and going to let us know something, their, their opinion on how it should be worked out within the next two to three weeks. So when speaking with him today, he said, I told him that we would hear back from GDOT.
PA out of the loop? How, how did they get out of the loop? I mean, I know all this is legal, but for my benefit.
Right.
Tell me how, the mechanism, how LPA was primary and, and the secondary got it, and now we, we're coming up with a five-year CIP and they're not even invited to.
Right.
So how, can you explain that? How, how did, how did the secondary get all this and the primary is, is out?
Well, I think in, in, going back to the initial design of the Phase One project, the runway expansion, I believe it was a negotiation that was going, taking place between the primary at the time, and then negotiations at some point stopped with the primary, and it went on to the secondary. What all, how that happened?
I know, I understand, but how, how, who made that determination to switch from the second, uh, primary to the secondary? Did you do that, was that?
No, sir, that was done prior to my being in this position.
Was that Mitch Sanders? Is that, is that would be?
I recall that there were, and I don't, since you brought up legal, I don't know how much to say, but I remember as a Commissioner, this is during the two years I've been on here now, that there were some issues. Fred was the county manager at the time, and he brought this to our attention, that there were some, some service issues and Crowe, that's when Crowe came up on the scene. This was all, I still, I remember us having all kinds of discussions about this.
About, so the Board approved?
I, I remember, yeah, I mean, there was, there was action, I remember, I mean, I'd have to go pull my minutes and, you know, and the agendas, but I remember us as a Board talking about these issues.
Was there a bid?
Crowe received the runway expansion.
Portion, there's, there are many phases to this runway expansion effort and the, and the overall airport layout plan. Crowe received last year, or the year before last, they received the award to do the runway expansion work. That did not remove LPA from being the lead consultant overall. Based on the December 5, 2011 resolution where the Board approved LPA as the lead consultant. That is my opinion on that issue. I don't know how things got switched out with the CIP, I hear what you're saying, Michael, that they offered to do it and things of that nature, but the resolution from December 2011 has never been repealed or changed, and did not change anything with respect to the, respective positions of the two consultants. Only the runway expansion work was done by the, was awarded to the secondary consultant.
So again, when it was brought to my attention, I think earlier in the week, reached out to representative from LPA and began conversations with him, and again, I know Ms. Comer, Carol Comer at GDOT, she's been made aware, and she, she was asking, asking the question, you know, how does this, how should this be resolved, and we're waiting on an opinion from her, and he said he was fine, we're waiting to hear what she has to say.
Let me ask Commissioner Preston, if, are you saying this was at a recorded meeting? That this was?
I, I remember us having quite a few discussions with Crowe, because there was, we had a local business that was impacted by a lot of this transition with, I think it was Metro Engineering, and, I mean, it must have happened two or three meetings. I mean, this was not something that occurred over one meeting.
Commissioner, I believe Metro was a subcontractor of LPA.
Of LPA, and then?
And when the switch was made, or recommended to be made by the, the then county manager to go to Crowe, that's when Metro, you know, raised the red flag and said, hey, hey, wait a minute, if y'all do this, it's going to impact our ability to get this business.
I'm going to go before you, just a minute.
Does, does Mr. Crowe, I see you're out in the audience, and I know you remember that because you were very cordial and nice as we went through all that, that, that experience, and we have, we don't have at least two meetings a month, if not four and five sometimes, so it's hard to recall which meeting and which month that some of these things occurred sometimes.
Uh, it, to, to my recollection, yes, you know, we were asked to submit, and we had several meetings here during your council meetings, your commission meetings, the issue with Metro came up, which by the way, ended up, they are a subcontract of ours also. And, and we moved forward with, with that particular project. You know, I'm not here to cast any issues that relates to LPA, another firm, but, but certainly, you know, we were asked to prepare a.
Who was the issue?
Uh, I think the, looking back on it, the discussions first began with the, the previous county manager prior, the county manager prior to Fred. The discussions first began with, with him, I believe, best I recall.
Okay, I'm going to go to the floor to the distinguished gentleman.
I remember having a number of conversations about it up here, and LDA, LBA, whatever the other companies' initials are, you were going to work with them, they were, they were upset they wasn't getting something, you were going to work with them and, and everybody was going to kind of work together, that was kind of the, or, or they were going to be a sub, some kind of sub to you. Fred, weren't you, you had, if you've got any information, or would you come to the podium, maybe you can clear it up?
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Thank you.
When the construction, pretty sure it was the construction, was started, or was the discussion of who was going to do the design work for the construction, the LPA was offered to put the bid together. The issue I had, and I cleared this with the previous Chairman, when I got to the point where the same repetitive problem occurred in their bidding process, working with GDOT to get it done, I went to GDOT, was told, it's our choice, we can make a change. I have a document from Carol Comer, who was at that time in charge of aviation, who said it was okay to do it. The problem was, we were running against a deadline that the approval had to be done by GDOT to get the bid in and approved, and LPA had taken, I'm thinking, five, six weeks to work back and forth. We had the same problem with them when they were doing the EA and the ALP, they took months. We were up a deadline that if we weren't done by a certain date with that process, the ability to put it out for bid, get the bids back, get the construction started and be done by August 1st of this year, we wouldn't be able to start the project because it would be too late to get it started, completed before the race in September. So that's when I went and suggested the change, talked with the Chairman, agreed, similar problems she was aware of, I brought it to the Board, then that was when Metro got upset because they're a local vendor, and they were losing their opportunity to work because they weren't a local vendor for Crowe. I wasn't looking at who was their subcontractors, wasn't something I was aware of, I was just working with the two contractors, LPA and Crowe. And at the end of the day, Crowe worked with Metro, and they became a subcontractor and actually did some work that was necessary along their expertise on that project.
That's what I remember, Metro was, that's where I was trying to get to, but Metro, they, they had a huge problem, but they couldn't do it on time, and they were pretty much dragging getting it done, and I remember, I remember about 90 percent of the conversation, and then Crowe elected to use Metro, which made the gentleman that was having such a hard time with it, he came and spoke to us and said he was happy with the arrangement, and that was, that's the last thing that I remember about that.
Yes.
Well, let me ask you this, did the LPA, was they consulted to, to do this work?
No, not by me, they were not.
This, this is why I'm having difficulty, and y'all can help me air this out, okay? All the written paperwork says that the primary is LPA, the secondary is Crowe. Okay, now, all of a sudden, if you look at the paperwork, it, it jumps, jumped around and.
Right.
Crowe gets all the work and LPA gets none. Now, we're now going to take rebids for, we call it Phase Two, so we're going to bid out Phase Two, which would be Phase Two.
Right.
Now, does, does LPA go back to be the primary and bid on this, or does Crowe continue being the provider in his secondary? Explain that, that's the problem I'm having.
Right, and again, I think, I think that same question was posed to Ms. Comer at GDOT as far as from a regulatory standpoint, how should it, how should it proceed? If there's a resolution in place, certainly that's something you need to go back and revisit and see what the, what the sitting Board determined, but I think that's, you know, I want to, I would like to see back what, what Ms. Comer says, what her determination, what her opinion is on, on how we got to this point, and steps going forward. You know, again, we do have a, a primary right now and a secondary, and it appears that the hierarchy has, 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 I don't want to say shifted, but you know, we, we use Crowe for the initial design work. Again, this particular item, the CIP, there was no, there was no contract involved because they just offered to, to put it together for it. When I stepped into the meeting probably about three, four weeks ago, it was presented to me that this is something that's required, GDOT requires this on an annual basis, and when I came into the meeting, Crowe was in the meeting, as was representatives from GDOT, and at the time, there was no conversation, nothing was brought up about whether or not LPA was brought in or not, so it felt like they had been, as my, I was under the impression that GDOT had been working in concert with Crowe to help develop the CIP. Now, now that Ms. Ms. Comer's been brought into the, into the equation, you know, she has said she'd like to have some time to look at it, see what's transpired, and make a, make a determination. You know, certainly, so, before going yet another further, another step, and issuing another contract, like to have that determination from, from GDOT to see what their opinion is on this, and then come back to the Board and see what direction we need to proceed in.
Do we, do we have a contract with LPA?
We have a contract with both LPA and Crowe pursuant to the December 5, 2011 resolution appointing the primary and the secondary, so yes, sorry.
Do we have a contract with both of them, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sorry.
At what point does one contract become null and void? When the other one gets to work, that couldn't be?
Well, before, it's my understanding, under the contract, that whenever a new phase of work is about to begin, there's a work authorization form that's submitted and completed, the issue is all about GDOT reimbursing us for the FAA funded work, and so I believe perhaps, well, Michael is correct, that having GDOT give a determination on this would be very critical because we don't want to be in a position where the county is on the hook for paying 100 percent of services because we are not following whatever rules we're supposed to be following. So we'll.
I'm fixing to read something, and, and you correct me, because this is written matter from LPA, but it, this is what they, this is the inquiry they made on Phase Two. It indicates that it is their understanding that the next contract opportunity will be related to assisting the county with the land acquisition process of the Animal Speedway property and/or the design permitting construction phase service associated with the relocation of Mount Pleasant Road. For the record, we have not been contracted by the county to discuss scope or fee on any project at the airport since the airport design contract was awarded to Crowe in July of 2012.
And I think Mr. Harris is going to correct that perhaps, after working with.
Right, and again, I.
Talking with the LPA representatives and with GDOT, I do think that the LPA person has a point, and I think Michael is going to work to correct that.
And we met today, I met with representatives from LPA today, and they're the same, they, they want to wait to hear what, what, what's, what comes out of, from GDOT, and, you know, they, they said they're certainly willing to hear what comes out then, and, and proceed accordingly. And I think we're both in agreement to do just that, you know, wait to hear what the opinion is from GDOT, and then proceed accordingly based on their opinion on how this unique situation should be, should be worked through.
I'm not sure it's really that unique though, but it's, the way it worked last time with the, the bidding, FAA have, they have interesting procurement rules, and we're all, we're in a learning process, but when you take bids and you're dealing with accepting bids for a new project or scope of work, you, you're only to deal with one consultant, your primary consultant. You're not to receive bids from both the primary and the secondary at the same time. Only if you can't reach any type of mutually acceptable agreement with your primary, you're, you are then to completely disengage from the primary and tell them, we're no longer going to engage in negotiations, cut them completely off, and then you can begin talking to your secondary. But you're not supposed to talk to them both at the same time, you can't look at the bid of the secondary and compare it to the bid of the primary, that would be in violation of FAA rules.
Are we talking to them at the same time?
I don't think bids were taken for the CIP.
There were, there were no bids.
But the, the previous one.
When did you get that email? Concerned with this?
It, it came from legal counsel.
I got the email yesterday, or I don't know, what's the date of that?
The only thing I'm a little concerned about is that I can tell from some, some of staff's faces that some of this is a little bit of a blind side, that this issue or concern was out there, and as to the Commissioners, this is the first we're hearing of this, this new concern. I just would ask that, you know, sometimes this stuff ought to be talked about, discussed, y'all have it, worked through it, or at least bring the Commissioners in the loop on it so that we don't look discombobulated on some of this, and then have Mr. Crowe and his, you know, and, and his cohorts come down here to, to the meeting. I mean, that, that's the only thing that troubles me about this whole discussion, is that if y'all had a day or two, and maybe you realize this thing wasn't ready for prom time, we, we could organize it or, or figure it out instead of us doing it this way.
With all due respect, the first indication, when, when it's asked to put this on here, they said it has to be because this has to be done before December 31st, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, I got this on the, on the 16th, or the 15th, Friday, Saturday, whenever it was, as a heads up, because I, I didn't know it was going to be on the. whenever it was, as a heads up because I, I didn't know it was going to be on the, the agenda until she sent it out Friday, Thursday of Friday. And I read it, but it didn't mean a whole lot. So the deal is, my first indication was not to put it there because we, we weren't prepared. We needed to work all this out. Then I'm told that this is the last regular meeting of the year and to meet FAA DOT, GDOT, we, we have to, have to do it at this meeting. So I, I just finished my review. You can ask Shay. I got the copy of the resolution. It was after 4:30 today. So I, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm just doing due diligence because if, if legal counsel puts us, and I know you're thinking, Latonya and I are in current contact with everything we do. She works for the county and I work for the county. We, we hash this out. I depend upon her to, to do this and the time to do it is now. Instead of waiting and, and had, had LPA not made this inquiry and filled this flag, then I'm satisfied with it coming up here and he'd have presented, would have voted on it and, and everybody went on their way.
And I will say too, Commissioner Preston, that I did share, as soon as I found out the concerns of LPA, I immediately forwarded, called the county manager, I talked to the county manager, I forwarded him the emails and discussed it with the county manager. I did not know Croy was coming this evening, but I certainly wasn't trying to blindside anyone, but certainly the concerns were made known to the county manager as well. So I apologize for not sending to all the commissioners LPA's concerns, but I did, there was an issue about whether it should be pulled from the agenda if it was ready to go, but because of the deadline, we could not pull it from the agenda.
Let me ask this question then. If we're under a critical timeline here, we have to have some form of resolution to stay within FAA standards of what they need with the five-year plan. Is there no way to change the language of the resolution that still, it meets the requirements of what we have to do by, by December 31st, but also vows the county manager to find out this solution from Carol over at GDOT? Is there not any way you can amend this language a little bit to where it's a win for everyone?
Carol has been addressed and she said, let our staff look at this and we will provide a response. It might take two weeks before we get a response. That was going to be December the 13th.
I, I don't think that any amendment is needed to the resolution at all, Commissioner Preston. I think it can be approved. There is an accompanying approval that needs to go with the CIP. I think Michael hadn't even gotten to that part yet, but there's no amendment to the resolution. I think it can be approved.
So it can be approved as is?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I'm going to read a, a published thing I put together with help because we're looking at a pending lawsuit, and I'm just going to do this for record. And then that way, if the board approves this, then I don't know where we'll be at. But anyway, the county manager needs to ensure that the bill season intention are carried out on these projects' issues. FAA reimburses the county for consultant services for the FAA-funded project. This is why we're going through all that. Therefore, we need to ensure that we adhere to the process of using our primary consultant. We may be adhering to this and we might have got that the correct way. I'm just stating this for the record. If we ever want to use a secondary consultant, FAA has a process for bypassing the primary and moving on to the secondary. Okay, this is why I ask you because time was of essence. I didn't have time to look at something. I don't know. Otherwise, I, I would answer my own question.
Right.
How we got there. So being quickly, time restraint, this is why we're doing it at this meeting. This is the last meeting of the year.
And again, I, I did want to stress the point again, when it was brought to my attention, the meeting itself, this issue with the CIP, it was done so in the presence of our consultant as well as representatives from GDOT. So certainly didn't think that they were being kept out of the loop. They were certainly aware of, of the steps that we were taking at the time as far as our involvement with, with Croy. So I, I didn't want the board to get the impression or the public to get the impression that it was being done in, in, in a vacuum absent from GDOT and their staff.
Well, I think the last part is, needless to say, we have to follow FAA rules. And failure to do so obviously could jeopardize any, any future monies we could get from FAA through, through GDOT. I want to make sure we do it right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Having said that, there, there is a, there is a resolution to approve the five-year, which is given it exclusively to Croy.
And again, this isn't, there's no monetary contract associated with doing the CIP. They've done the CIP. All this, there are some associated documents, application for federal assistance, application for state assistance, a categorical exclusion checklist, which is environmental constraints, as well as a program narrative. Those are the supplemental documents that get submitted along with the CIP. This action would by no means be, obligate the, the, the board to enter into any kind of a contractual arrangement with Croy or anybody else. They've prepared the work. The work has been done at this point in, in preparation of the CIP, so there's no monetary agreement.
So what you're saying, once this, once the CIP is approving all that, we will bid all this out for Phase Two?
Right. That still hasn't been, we haven't bid out the work for Phase Two. This is.
We, we, we bid out, who did Phase One?
The design for Phase One was done by Croy.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm about as confused now as I was at the start.
I want to make sure I understand something. Our county attorney said that there is nothing wrong, nothing, no matter what Carol Comer says, we're okay to make this motion and approve this resolution as it is. Is that correct?
I would say no matter what she says. I know that this document, the resolution before you, is the five-year agreement does not, as Michael said, obligate the county to enter into any kind of five-year contract with Croy.
So it's not an exclusive agreement as, as what was presented? This is just a five-year agreement or a plan?
It's our five-year plans, our CIP, our annual CIP, and the issue of whom preparing it, why they're preparing it, might be tangential and related, but it doesn't prevent you all from approving this document.
It is not tied to any engineering firm at all to this motion, right?
No, sir.
Then we should have probably just had that conversation, had the other conversations, instead of putting it all through.
I, I make a motion to move to approve the, the resolution.
Have a motion from District Two, second from District Five. Any further discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Right hand. I'm doing this because I'm absolutely confused on how we got there. Resolution request and amendment to an intergovernmental agreement for the city of McDonough at Garden Jonesboro Road.
Members of the board, in 2011, Henry County received a $250,000 grant from Georgia DLT for landscaping along Jonesboro Road. The county was to install GDOT-approved plants, trees, and shrubbery in the right-of-way along Jonesboro Road. Under the agreement, as part of the grant, the county is also required to maintain the landscaping in accordance with the mowing and maintenance agreement that was also entered into with GDOT. Following that, on October 4th, 2011, the board entered into an agreement with the city of McDonough for an exchange of services regarding this matter. In that agreement, the city agreed to maintain the landscaping along Jonesboro Road in exchange for the county providing paving services in the amount of $60,000. It was estimated by the county's Department of Transportation that the cost of maintaining that landscape would be $60,000. So in exchange, the county agreed to provide $60,000 worth of paving services to the city of McDonough. Before you tonight is to propose the amendment to the original agreement further clarifying the responsibilities and obligations of both parties. Under the agreement, the city is to assume all the county's responsibilities under the mowing and maintenance agreement with GDOT. The county will not be responsible for providing any paving services until the landscaping has been fully approved, completed, approved by GDOT and accepted by the city. And if there is any damage to the landscaping, that is not the fault of either the county or the city, such as a drought or an automobile accident destroying the landscaping, then the county and the city each will be fifty percent responsible for repairing the damage. The city of McDonough met last evening and approved this agreement in their public meetings. I have for you tonight the agreement in the same form as was presented to the city of McDonough and recommend your approval.
Anybody have any questions?
Chairman, I got, I got a question for Terry. Oh, Terry, are we complete with all the plannings?
No, sir. I believe I talked with Tim this afternoon and Tim tells me after about ten working days, he should be able to complete that. Ten working days, you know, where it's not too wet, too cold, the ground froze. So, you know, weather holds and we get some decent time, he'd probably complete somewhere in, in January of 2014.
Anybody else have any questions?
And that's for the record purposes. Exhibit A is the county original resolution that the county approved, resolution number 231. Exhibit B is the mowing and maintenance agreement with GDOT. And Exhibit C will be the revised landscaping agreement from November 27, 2013, prepared by Breedlove Land Planning.
Well, I'm going to share this with the audience. Commissioner Bowman and I have met, I'm going to say many times. Wasn't many times, but it was more than a few times with the city of McDonough, and this, this thing has been critiqued, worked out, and like you said, McDonough approved it last night at their meeting and I, unless one of the board members wants to tweak it, I think it's been tweaked to death. So I would recommend that we seriously consider approving the resolution to approve the contract. If somebody would consider that.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Three to approve. Have a second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have the approval of SPOS condemnation settlement, county attorney.
Yes, sir. This is handle number one on your bench. On July of this year, of this year, the county filed a condemnation action in conjunction with the SPOS III Fairview Road widening project for the property located at 39 Fairview Road, Ellenwood, Georgia. This property is a .74 acre commercial tract that is currently being utilized as a small strip center with the barber shop and boutique and other stores. As a result of the project, the road widening project, there were significant impacts to the property. And I'll just put, I tried to highlight it, but I think I, I probably used the color. As a result of our project, the existing business sign here had to be destroyed and removed by Henry County DLT. Existing parking that's in the front of the building, all the parking was in front of the building, that had to be demolished and removed to make room for the required right-of-way. There's an additional parking space and that totals about 12 parking spaces total that the landowner would lose. All the parking would go from the front of the building to where the building, as you can see, is now a very conducive and well-lit place. But that's where the property owners, customers will now have to park because that's where the parking space. In order to accommodate putting a parking lot back here, the parking lot would now sit on top of the septic drain, and so that had to be removed and a manhole had to be created in order to connect the, the business to sanitary sewer. So as a result of the impact caused by the county's road project, we began settlement negotiation discussions with the property owner's attorney. As a result of that, those discussions, we have come to an agreement that we were asking your approval, or a tentative agreement, to pay into the registry of the court an additional $117,641 due to the described impact that I've just shown to you. At the time of acquisition, the county paid $92,539 into the registry of the court. So I'm asking for your public approval and consideration of the settlement agreement.
These are SPOS three funds?
These are all SPOS funds. And Rocky is here too, if you want to have any more specific questions about the, the impact of the project on the property.
Do we have a resolution or a, this place mine?
No, there's an agreement before you. There's a settlement agreement. So I just, we need you all to authorize.
Anybody else have any questions? Before you have an agreement, settlement agreement between Henry County and William O. Chavez? Does somebody move that we authorize the execution of this settlement agreement? We have a motion from District Four.
I got a comment. I got a comment more than that because when people look at that, they're going to see that kind of money. And, and when you look at those pictures, what we're having to do is they're not going to have any parking in the front of their building now. What we're going to have to do at the end of the day is put all the parking in the back. Well, the back of the building's going to have to turn into the front of the building. And if you look at those pictures, you know, it's basically going to take a really good contractor or a magician, one of the two. But at the end of the day, that's got to turn into the front of the building. So they're losing everything in the front. And I understand from the settlement standpoint because, you know, I don't know who would want, first of all, the front's got to turn into the back.
Right.
I mean, and that's, that's what's going to happen. And so it's, while it's a lot of money, at the end of the day, it, it's about the only way that you can resolve it and be fair to the business owner.
We don't have many with this kind of impact before. I can't recall, you may not be able to recall either Commissioner Bowman, but this one was pretty unique in the, in the impact. A lot of the properties along Fairview Road are very close to the existing road, and so we've had a lot of sign removal issues and everything is bumped right up to the existing right-of-way.
Under those conditions, I move to approve, Mr. Chair.
I move District.
Port to approve. Have a second from District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous? All opposed? Same sign. Next, we have a resolution appointing the county surveyor. Ms. Janet, would you be so kind as to explain this to us?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. In 2012, we passed House Bill 823, which is a local legislation to move the elected position of county surveyor to an appointed position of county surveyor. Georgia law requires us to have a county surveyor. It just doesn't say whether they have to be elected or appointed. Now, this is a non-paying, non-salaried position, and actually I feel like this is an old Georgia bill that's been in place for a long time. No, no. But anyway, every county has one, let's put it that way. So anyway, we're going with the appointment, which we already passed with the legislation. And most of the larger counties have already put this position into an appointed position instead of elected. The appointed, the last appointed, I mean, the last elected official was Mr. Wayne Powers. That is who I'm asking the board to recommend or to vote tonight to put him in the appointed position of county surveyor, which is a four-year position. He does have all the qualifications that is specified and requirements as far as licensing for surveyor. Okay? This does not in any way, I think, bind them in any way, if there is specific jobs or whatever, but we, we, we're under, we just had to move it from county to appointed, and there's a lot of reasons. It costs, it costs more money to put more names on the ballot. Counties don't use surveyors as much as they used to with the technology that we have nowadays. So if you would have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them or otherwise I'd ask for your vote to, to appoint Mr. Powers.
Anybody have any questions, comments? If not, we have a resolution to book appointing the, Mr. Wayne Powers to serve as the appointed county surveyor until December 31st, 2017. If somebody's moving that in record. We have a motion for District One, second from District Five. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you. Commissioner have any public comments they'd like to make at this time for any reason? Flow is yours. Here are none. Public comment, citizens allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of the meeting, all person in which you speak. The public comment, have to sign up with the county clerk beginning of the meeting. When you sign up, you need to put your name, address. When you sign up, you need to put your name, address, and topic of which to speak for and you will be recognized for five minutes. The only one I have here is Mr. Bill Tony and you get, Mr. Tony, you get, you get five minutes.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North McDonough. I was wanting to speak about surplus properties and equipment and everything and, excuse me. And I know me and Tommy, we've, we've been talking all year, having meetings and having conversation about getting all the properties together and everything. And I'd like to thank you, Tommy Smith, for the well-done job, very well done. And I'd like to maybe get everything as soon as we can posted for the people to see what the properties we have, what equipment's going up and just kinda be transparent just like you've done all, you know, all year on getting this stuff done. Second, I'd like to, I'd like to say something about the, the impact fees. All right, last year when we were all in campaign mode, I talked to a guy at Deep South Diner and he had a restaurant about the size of a Waffle House. His impact fees were $5,000. Now, any small businesses starts out, they have a hard time, they have a real hard time. I started my business with $5,000. Today, I don't know how, how much that played a part of it, but he's out of business today. And I'd like for, for y'all to maybe think about posting some of this stuff on the website to where the fees that y'all collect and where all those fees goes and where you can maybe help some of these small business guys out. Like I said, that's one, I felt like he was a casualty and, you know, it was just, it was an unfortunate thing, I'm sure, but.
Bill, you asked about like the water impact fees.
Is that what you're talking about when you start a restaurant or some of the other things?
The business impact fees are the impact fees. I said, he said he had a $5,000 impact fee on his, when he opened the restaurant.
If you're, if, a lot of times I hear from restaurant, restaurants and so forth, a lot of those impact fees are like water impact fees and so forth and I'll, I mean, I don't wanna steal anybody's thunder, but I think that they're going to be coming before the board at the beginning of 2014 with their own proposal and how they can be a little more competitive and trim those down significantly. That's what I've been talking with several of the water authority members and they're, they're looking at hopefully trimming down the, you know, because we've had increases in the water rates as well as the water impact fees. They're looking to try to, to do everything they can to work with the commissioners and show that small businesses as well as big businesses that wanna come to Henry County that we're, we're open for business and we want you here. So I think your, your concerns definitely have been part of the discussion and we, it's been heard and we're, hopefully things are in the works to make that happen.
I just, you know, like I said, it's, it's tough being a small businessman anyway and you need all the help you can get. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
County manager, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this time?
No, sir.
Before I wish you Merry Christmas? County attorney?
No comments.
Merry Christmas. They'll come to meetings, all county offices will be closed on the following dates for the holidays, December 24th and December 25th, December 31st and January the 1st. January the 7th, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. would be a regular scheduled meeting and January 21st, 2014 would be at 6:30 p.m. All these would be regular meetings. Somebody move, we adjourn.
I'll move.
Have a motion from District Three, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.